Like we're. A time, place and point. I thought they would be here tonight. He is scheduled for opening ceremonies. So I'll tell you, I'll just wing one upset. Aaron, you asked me about a year ago what umpiring was like. I think I've been doing a lot of umpiring and I've noticed that there's something very, very similar about. Being mayor and being an umpire. And that is the need to have meaningful dialogue. With people that might be disappointed or angry or upset. With something that you have done. And you're smiling because you all know how that goes and. Whereas it might be a resident of Nibley that. You are engaged in that dialogue, of course, in umpiring, it's typically a coach and. And I know that the key to all of this. Is at the beginning of the game. Or the beginning of whenever you decided to serve the citizens of Nibley. Is to commit to those conversations, commit to have those conversations, no matter. How hard it might be to have a meeting dialogue and. You all figure out pretty quickly, sometimes the coach just walks the bed and. And the other thing you figure out pretty quickly is. Just because you offer that conversation and. Have that conversation, that doesn't mean that a coach. Is going to change the umpire's mind about it all. So there is that similarity and I know you all do that so well and I just appreciate the way you engage with. With our citizens and with our residents and. The way you really try to get to a point where having a meaningful conversation instead of yelling. So thank you. So stand with that. You'll save the closing week. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, let's call the July 25th, 2025, Nibley City Council meeting to order. And begin with a roll call on that end, please, Garrett.
Garrett, settle.
Aaron Mann.
Nathan Larson.
Norman Larson.
Larry Jacobson.
We've got Robert City Planner.
Justin Monstee Manager.
Tom Dickinson City Engineer.
Chair Bodleif Taylor.
And here's the Chair of our Planning Commission walking in. Thank you, Nick, for coming in. Um, we like to have property rights represented as well, so thanks for that. Okay, with that, I ask council to have a look at the June 18th and June 26th meeting minutes and tonight's agenda, if you would consider those for me, please.
We need to move both the minutes.
Okay, move motions, uh, second from Aaron to approve two sets of minutes and then the agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you. Any opposed? No, the motion passes. Uh, Cheryl, as always, thanks for your great job on the minutes. Next, we'll have a public comment period. This is a chance for citizens and non-citizens of Nibley to address the council within a week. They would like to have us here. In a structured dialogue, sort of way, or any way that they want to. There's nobody signed up, but. We're happy to take comment from anyone who's here to speak to us. Sure, I will. Okay, please come up. Thank you. That's terrific.
Greg Anderson. And tonight is, uh, my parents live off of Course Circle Drive and they just wanted me to. Mention tonight, they were so happy to see the street sweeper come by Course Circle today. And so the street sweeper, uh, mom does love her thing, does help her out a little bit and so it came over. She did ask me to mention a thank you to the city for that.
Thank you so much for passing that along. That's terrific. Anyone else wish to address the council? Uh, seeing not, we'll move on to, we've added a new regular agenda item that obviously won't happen every time. This is a Parks and Rec Advisory for.
Yeah, I made, yeah. Ken was unable, she thought it would be able to be here, she was unable to do so and. Chad was unable to cover, so they've asked to be moved to the next meet.
Look, Chad. Put this on a daily aside. And if they have something, they have something. If they don't, they don't. Let's see, I think we have not had a BZ. Meeting since our last meeting, actually, I've had a new a little bit for a change. Rhetorically speaking, theoretically speaking, so. Let's move right on to ordinance 2515. This is amending the mixed residential zone RM. And we've talked about this a few times. Was continued from our last meeting. Levi, do you want to summarize it or? I suppose there's probably nothing new.
Right, there's nothing new. I'm happy to give any information. It may, it might be best just to field questions if you have any or. Comments or, you know, discussion that way. I've, uh, introduced it a couple of times. So. Unless, unless you, unless anyone wants a more, uh, complete.
Yeah, I'm having to read through it, um, a few times. You've prepared a before and after chart that I.
Yeah, I'll put that up there. Yeah. Yeah, I put that up there. So I can go through it if you'd like or. Is it a diagonal discussion? Yeah, that's. Yeah, so just in general, um, this is summary of the changes that are proposed. So the, there's currently no. Uh, regulation on the size of the RM zone. It is being proposed that it's, that an RM zone would need to be between 10 and 40 acres. The RPUD size would be reduced from 40 acres to 20 acres. Um, the location of an RM is currently, there's currently a map. That has a couple of parcels, one, one is, which is in, currently in Logan City and the other, the other one is Weston Nelson Farm Property. And instead of that, the, the code references our future land use map. And, uh, areas that are designated as high density or town center. The. There's currently no requirement for mixed use for any kind of commercial development within an RM zone. It is allowed, but it's not required. And what would change is, uh, 10% of, of ground floor area needs to be dedicated to. Commercial uses. For areas that are either near state highway or, or intersection of arterials and there's, there's kind of more specific parameters of. How, how close to those, but, uh. But that would be added. The RM maximum density. Uh, the, the only change here is that it, in a mixed use. Uh, basically adds, adds the opportunity to increase the density by about 20% from 10 units per net developed acre to 12. The. For the RPUD, the maximum density for, for the base zoning for an RPUD would. Be raised from five units to seven units per net developed acre. And there's currently a regulation both for RPUD and RM. That if they're adjacent to a single family, uh, residential. You know, other residential zone. Then, or, or a residential dwelling. Uh, that within 300 feet. That you need to have, uh, exclusively single family dwellings. But what, what would change is that. Just the design of the building rather than saying that it needs to be single family. It's just limited to two stories and less than 100 feet in building length. So it could be something like a townhome. Um. But just a smaller scale. A multi-family garage orientation. There, there's currently an encouragement for reloaded garages, but this update. Um, requires it, uh. There's, there's certain applications where it could be required depending on the layout, but really this, this is, this is stronger language to, to require it. Um. The current code would remove the, or, or sorry, the proposed code would remove the requirement for clubhouse pool or splash pad. And then. The, this, it would also adopt an option for a fee in lieu of. Required open space and amenities within the RM, RPUD and the open space subdivision. If, if they're within a half a mile of a park that's over two acres in size, city park.
Thank you, Levi. Nick, we appreciate the planning commissions. Good, honorable conference, so thanks for that. Is there anything you want to add to it, Nick?
No, I have to, I can't speak for every member of the commission, but. We did spend a lot of time, you don't do any, yes, obviously.
Cause we have, you know how popular we are. Do you know how popular we are on YouTube?
Yeah.
In fact, you, you being here tonight has cut our viewership in half.
Nick is the, uh, Chairman of Planning Commission. I mean, he said plus thirty six weeks out, um. Yeah, so on the planning commission. We spent multiple meetings, um, discussing the RM zone, starting from, is it even? Do we even need it as a zone to now what you see before you, um? And I think we can sense this, obviously, I'm not going to speak for any individual member while trying to summarize our discussions as a. Um, but I think we can sense this was, um, trying to figure out how to, um. Design this zone to enable, you know, more higher density for kids, obviously. Figure out what are the constraints, existing constraints that may inhibit the success of this zone. So we felt like setbacks being one, um, do we, you know, the amenity requirements being another one. I think we've dealt with, you know, the council's dealt with that, obviously, recently some developed agreements on other projects, things like that. Um, and just trying to get a little more creative and flexible respect to how some of the individual characteristics and parameters of the zone as well. Uh, I do like the idea that, um, leveraging the, the land use plan essentially and figuring out where. It makes sense within Nibley and really, this is, to me, if this is a successful zone, we should just identify those areas and then just let the process. Right? So the, the idea behind maybe removing the map as a train, just saying, okay, in our land use plan. These are areas that we feel like based on our planning efforts make sense for the zone and then just let the zone be what it is. That's a fair. Synopsis of the majority of meetings. So I don't know if you guys, any members of the council have any questions for me? Uh, we did, we spent a lot of time on this and, um. And I'm just excited to hear your opinion. So. I'll be here, yeah, appreciate it. Thank you, Nick.
Council, I'll turn it to you for discussion and consideration. Please.
On the very last one, the B and Lu. Do we have any? Places in Nibley that are not within half mile of a park maybe besides Hall Road?
Uh, I, I definitely think we do, but, uh. I can, I can look at that closer. That's easy enough, but, but yeah, we definitely, we definitely do. It's, it's too, it's a two acre park, so that's. Um. Right, right. So Elkhorn, Ander. Heritage. Um. Yeah.
Nathan. Let me move to your group.
They have a motion and a second from motion from Nathan, second from Aaron, uh, for approval. Uh, discussion on that motion, please.
Yes, I was going to pass for more time, so I appreciate it. I think, uh. I talked a little bit, uh. Nick as well today, I appreciate the input today as well, uh. There's a couple of things that I've come to the conclusion of, like, I still think that, uh, this is good. I think that they did great work. Uh, I think I was just a little surprised at the lack of discussion offered and maybe it's just because they did such a good job. There wasn't, there wasn't a lot of like, oh, we like this, at this. But in terms of that, I think, um. The no map essentially means that we are good to let this happen, but a rezone is still necessary. Uh, what this does, I realized, is for the longest time, we've had a future land use that. Set median to high density, but we've never really designated what that meant. As far as units per acre, so this is starting to do that. Essentially, 20. With the TR, TR and 12 to us is, quote, high density. We're kind of blading that line different, because this is the highest that we allow. Uh, and we're designating it, you only have it in those areas, so. My questions, I think I've realized are more. General planning questions. At doing that. Um. Like, for example, my concern isn't with. The ordinance, it's with our land use plan. That are high density areas are exposed to what we call high density areas. Uh, so I'm kind of, I think it's okay. I'm happy, uh, knowing all those things, I think I'm good to pass tonight. The 10 minimum. Still makes me wonder, because I think that it'd be interesting to see opportunities of smaller acreage could do something fun. Or even kind of like. A smaller, like, almost a duplex type thing in this, just kind of, with sound, um, letting all the land affect.
Yeah, can I speak to that? And I would say this, this came from the discussion of the planning commission, um. Specifically, specifically one commissioner pointed out multiple times that if, if it's, if the project's too small. Then. The management of, of a multi-family project oftentimes gets neglected. Cause it, cause you just don't have the. The scale, whether it's an HOA, the HOA isn't big enough or a property management from a property management perspective. So that was kind of the logic behind the 10 acres. If you get something too small, that was, that was at least. One commissioner's perspective. I don't, I would, I don't, I wouldn't say that that was unanimous, that everyone thought that same. Thing, but that was, that was kind of the compromise and that was the, that was the dialogue. With that, that. 10, 10's enough to have a substantial project that can be. Managed, maintained, um. Anyway.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. One of the questions, what is our, what is our procedure to break down? In each of these, after our discussion today with. Heritage. Curious if we have a procedure to break down, is it just multi-family, single family or to break it down further?
Yeah, we don't, we, we haven't done that with this. And with the RM zone, part of the reason is. It, I think the idea in general is that an RM zone is going to be more. For smaller. A smaller project and RPUD is going to be larger and have, have more variety of housing. It'll have a mix of, of. Single family. Now, you can build single family in, in an RM zone, but most. single family. Now, you can build single family in, in an RM zone, but most likely with the market, you're, you're going to get a smaller project that it may have some uh multiple different housing types that allows it, but it doesn't require it. Because on a ten acre project, it might just be a townhome project, for example. Um, and it, it doesn't necessarily have that variety. Now, that doesn't mean it's not, you're not going to have that variety in the vicinity because you have a limited area for the RM zone. So it's going to be around other neighborhoods that do have the, the variety of housing. That's. But I think it's something that could be enhanced in the ordinance for sure. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think we, I, I definitely think we can do that. I, we didn't really, there was some discussion, there was definitely a lot of discussion on that. But this doesn't necessarily change that component of the ordinance.
Thank you, Gary.
Now we have one uh on it, that D and X Logan, because they've acquired commercial on the highway. Does it affect something like that?
So it does. It's not quite as, i- it's not quite as uh restrictive as it, as it was for Logan. So in Logan, a hundred percent of the ground floor would have to be commercial. In this case, ten percent would. So you might need some component of commercial, a, a minor component of the project. But the idea is, we, we want to encourage some level of commercial, at least where there's some opportunity for it. And, and it seemed like this is limited. It's, if it's right along highways or, or the convergence of two arterial streets. So I think like twelve hundred west, thirty two hundred. There's not a whole lot, and maybe twenty six hundred and twelve hundred would also, would be another one. Um, where if you had this zone, that it would be, it'd be required.
Well, commercial and it's not. And, and it's more than just putting a vending machine or ten percent.
Yeah, I, at least what, what I, from what I heard from, from Logan City's ordinance, in the commercial zone, that is. Not, it wasn't a mixed use zone, but in the commercial zone, they did allow multi-family above commercial. But it had to be all commercial on the ground floor if it was a commercial zone. And we're saying ten percent, we don't, I mean, we don't know exactly. We felt like that was reasonable to have some level of, of commercial mixed in.
Uh. I would like to have discussion thoughts on, so fee in lieu of open space amenities. Uh, I think it's fun concept to consider. The only one is the open space subdivision allowed there. Um, wondering if we feel like that defeats the purpose of an open space subdivision. This comes from that kind of conservation subdivision that, oh, the idea was we want to save these spaces that are in that location. Um. You know, like special trees or a hill. This is essentially saying, we're okay with you paying to not conserve that. The, this, the, the ordinance has changed a little bit, so it's less focused on just conserving. I got a discussion with that, yes, awesome.
Yeah, I think you make a good point. I, I believe all along the open space or conservation subdivision has been intended to mitigate the impact. Cause it's, could be a small development to mitigate the impact to existing houses that are already there by creating uh that buffer. Oftentimes, open space between the existing houses and then these new houses that are with good people. And so I always thought the open space subdivision was a good tool to mitigate the immediate impact as opposed to uh enhance a park cap.
Thank you. So I discussed it, you should all.
Uh, no, I mean, I don't know if it was opposed the same way you did, of, you know, of these, the sensitive lands. I think, I think there's an acknowledgement just in general that although there's definitely value to preserving open spaces, also a cost with it. And, and for some of them, there's uh less, it's less valuable if it's smaller and it's already in proximity to other, other usable open space. But less value from the use of, the usability of the space. If there's something else there that may not, maybe it's not even approved. And if they could pay a fee in lieu, I can go toward improving that, that space rather than just adding more and more open space. Um. I don't know, I don't know, Nick, if you have any.
Sure.
Thing else to add on that, but.
Yeah, I think the key word to think about is allow, so not necessarily entitled to, right? So just like any other decision that the council has to make um in any development. Um, I think that was the concept was that you're already within a, a half mile of a two acre park. Are we seeing redundant respect to taking on more open space, whether the city or we're putting that back onto the development to manage themselves. And so I, I, that's why I like the word allowed, which means it's still a choice to the um the, the commission and the city and not necessarily entitled to.
Yeah, and the process wise, the open space subdivision is still a legislative action group.
It's not, it's, it's administrative, but but the open space, if the city, and, and, and maybe this could be made more explicit with the, with the fee in lieu. If the city's taking on open space, that is a discretionary decision of the council. And I suppose would be the same way with the fee in lieu, but I'm, I'd have to double check the language. Um. At this point in time, there's not a fee assessed. So that would need to also happen before anyone could really do this. Um, is my understanding, but, because we, we need to determine what the fee would be or how to. I mean, there's a few different options of, of how of, you know, what, what approach to take. Uh, you know, the, the, well, this is a similar discussion we had is with the T D R and how to determine, you know, how how much to sell the city's development rights for, what should that process be? And we talked about, I mean, it's a complicated process, but getting into a developer's pro forma and how much are they going to benefit? You know, financially, and then are we gonna, you know, the city takes a cut and the developer takes a cut of that. We want to be more simple. We can just pick a number that seems reasonable, like a per acre number um of you know, I just, we, we can research and come up with a, you know, ten thousand per acre, whatever, whatever that number is that we think is reasonable for, for development. And, and it could be based on that specific, more specific number.
Yeah. In that regard, would we want to do a percentage of value or something since that changes all?
We could, yeah, we could do that. There's a few different, I, I guess there's a few different approaches. At the, I guess at this stage, it opens up the door. And then the next step would be looking at and, and recommending a, an approach to adopt. But that would come out of the fees, the fee schedule. This is dead. Um, this is. Yeah, this refers to the consolidated fee schedule. So uh for, for the open space, for amenities, it's just based on the value of the amenities.
So the RM zone actually becomes an administrative rule.
Uh.
Is.
Is, it is, yeah. I mean, it's.
So this, let's make a deal on the in lieu of, how does that fit into an administrative process?
Uh, I think it would come in the development agreement stage, which the development agreement, i- if, if they choose to, to do this through the process of the development agreement, that would be.
And who's approving the development agreement for RM?
It depends what they're asking for. If, if they're, if, if they ask for something that conflicts with our code, it goes to council. If they, if they're asking to uh dedicate land to the city, it goes to the council. Uh, but if they just check all the boxes and they meet everything, it would be planning commission.
And, and thank you. And so that's, I think what you guys are getting at, and I think it's a little bit, worries me a little bit that the fee in lieu of is not, is possibly not a council decision.
We could, we could add a line, just, just a suggestion. I think you've raised a good point. We could add a line that simply says something to the effect of a fee in lieu must be approved by city council through development agreement.
Okay. To me, this is a negotiation.
Mm-hmm.
The fee in lieu of is, is like, not a developer saying, well, I just don't want to deal with it. I'm just going to give you money so I can get on with it. I think that this is a negotiating point for the city and I, I think the council should be entrusted to that. I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, part, if we go way back to the very genesis of the open space subdivision, the first step in the open space subdivision, and it was a difficult one for developers to deal with, was identify what is of value to the community and set that aside, right? Well, that's a, that's a, it's a uh, a, a value proposition. Nobody, not everyone will say this is what is of value to the community and therefore this is what should be conserved, like Nathan said, whether it's a a stand of trees or whether it's a viewscape or whether it's a whatever, whatever. And so as things become more administrative and less of a value proposition, as we set aside open space or pay money in lieu of, um, if, as that becomes more administrative, then there's less, I mean, it's not negotiable as to what the council or somebody represents the citizens of Nibley find valuable that should be used to mitigate the impact of new development.
So in your eyes, us saying, of course, the fee amount in the consolidated fee scale was not enough?
Um, it is, because we could set it at an infinite number of dollars. And then we would start having a negotiation.
Yeah, I, I just um come to the conclusion that our zones are hard because we require negotiation on all of them. Except for maybe the ones we don't really want in Nibley anymore, which is two or half acre box.
They do. And and there's nothing, I think, more frustrating to a opponent than negotiation. Because they want to know, what do I have to do? I'll decide if I can do it and then I'll move forward or I'll go somewhere else. And so the negotiation is invest a bunch of time and effort and then find out that it's not going to work out. Um. We could always go back to the way things were when I was on the planning mission, where we had a very, very, very code-based uh set of zoning requirements. You shall have this for me, you shall, and you shall, and you shall, and you shall, and you shall. And you end up with some pretty lackluster products because you're designing a subdivision, subdivision, no offense to a set of engineering standards more than than I think the look and feel of the, of the community. So. Yeah, I struggled with this for twenty five years, code-based versus form-based. It's a, it's a hard.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just realizing, as well, ready for strategy. And I'd go also. And that, it's also a part of the process. Something about long negotiations is required for all of our standard ordinance and system. This one would be included now.
Yeah, I, Nathan, if you don't mind, or did, or you had, do you have more on that?
I just, I just typed up something if you want, just for sake of.
Okay.
Get it, eh, any fee in lieu, i- if you want to add this as a provision, and this could be added to every section related to fee in lieu. I just added it to one of them. There's really three, because there's a, uh, but any fee in lieu of open space or amenities must be approved by city council as part of a development agreement approval. If you want to do that, I think that covers it.
In three spots, the three types of zoning, uh, I have a motion and a second compare. Add that amendment approval by the council for fee in lieu of.
I think this gives the stab, that, that way they're like, well, you know, you, you either uh necessary schedule or just another set of ideas. It's fair to propose, because you guys do that anyways. And I think I'll just keep it.
Yeah, I mean, the council is going to turn to staff and say, well, what's it worth?
Yeah.
And, but still, it's the council. You know, taking the money instead of the property or instead of the amenity. So I think that's a good amendment.
Plus, plus it puts it as an agenda item. So if it is something their neighbors are really passionate about, then they'll actually have a chance to speak.
No, I don't want that park half a mile away.
Yeah.
I want it to, to mitigate the impact on me. Right.
I know it's one more step. I think that's the value of it.
Okay, any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none of those in favor of the amendment in three places, right? Similar language for the three types of zoning that. Uh, in favor of that amendment, please say aye. Any opposed? So Nathan, I think you hit it on the head from the very start, and we touched on this in previous meetings, right? Given the optimism, excitement, hope, expectations of going through the general plan and having something that is, that means something, that's practical, that's actually tells us what to do with certain parts of towns instead of just saying medium to high density, you know, especially the future land use map. Um, I, I, I mean, I caution us, I think this is good work. I think this is a, a valid zone that was born of a completely different genesis than what it is now. And we only have to go back through that genesis. Um, but I still feel like we may have, and, and hammer is too strong of a word. I'm not trying to be forceful. Maybe we have a, a, a small hammer looking for a, a nail. We know what to swing, we know, but we don't know where that nail is without having completed our general plan and having gone through that exercise. And we may not know exactly after that either, but I'll feel better about. Now, the council, you know, this is a legislative decision, still with and without the map, whatever, to go through a rezoning process. That's up to you all with the advice, uh, advice of the, of the planning commission. You know, but it sends a message to a developer, we have the zone, we have the hammer. We don't know if we have the nail. Or we don't know where the nail should, should go. So to me, it's a little bit of a mixed message. I think, you know, if the council passes this, I would, I would still be careful about, you know, what we do on results. And that just kind of frustrates people a little bit more, because we ask people to, we'll go read our zoning ordinance. So, oh, this looks good. Nah, no, I don't, not there, not in a nice spot.
I did, I did, I've seen you, I was working, meeting people from all over the valley, and lately I'm getting a lot of people that are just first time uh starting their life together as a married couple, and they're saying where you're from, from Nibley. So I think something like this gives a balance, you know? Or we'll ask, but, just get a variety and give us more variety of people here, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy as clam at high tide about the community that is being developed. With things like roots line, I mean. As you expect, good people live there, and they're becoming a a valued and integral and supportive and active and healthy part of our community.
Yeah.
And that's what we want.
Mm hmm.
So. I think we're all, we're all learning that lesson, so.
Yeah. It'd be interesting, I mean, we, like you said, we built the the one zone that hasn't been built out. We're already changing it, so it's be interesting to see. I I guess this shows that. Can be changed if if it's wrong, or. We're listening and changing it to make it so it's more buildable. I mean, like I said, the commission's first question that I also had is do we even need it? And choosing the reset process.
And then decide if we need it in the question. Build that expectation.
Yeah.
See what happens. Okay. Great discussion. Thank you. Anything else? Any opposition to voting? Same none, we'll call for the vote. So we have the uh the the one amendment in three places. Other than that, it's as presented. Sheriff, will you do the honors, please?
No.
In favor? Okay.
In favor.
Okay. For our favor and unpost, Levi Plan Mission Council, going to spare your words on this. So. All right, let's uh let's move right along to a very interesting. Adam, this is a discussion and consideration of resolution twenty-five dash three. This is an agreement with the state of Utah. Uh for. Pretty exciting possibility, in my opinion. I'll go ahead and bias the introduction. This is UDOT willing to spend about four million dollars on trail in our neck of the woods. Doesn't mean it's, so Justin will lead us through a discussion on that.
It just scrolls.
And and why you have to back up at UDOT's.
Should we sue?
Uh right now. All right, thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. So the Utah Trail.
Network.
Network, thank you. Wow, Utah Trail Network is a program that Governor Cox initiated a few years ago about trying to connect. Utah with the trail system similar to the freeways, if you will, just try to build this big network of trails. So. There's been a bunch of money put aside to go into this effort. Cache Valley was, or Cache County, excuse me, in the early phases of this, put in some applications or discussion at least about what this this trail and whether it would be a good fit for this program. It was selected in the. First go-round of projects that were submitted and to be funded. It was, as Mayor mentioned, four million dollars set aside to construct this trail. There's been a lot of discussions since then. There's some discussion about the trail alignments and other conservation. Efforts underway and what's going on in the middle there with the the Furman property. But in the end, this is what it's kind of been boiled down to. The county has done a feasibility study on this and is willing to. And UDOT is willing to move forward with this project and design and construction. But there, because I'm making some assumptions here, I'm assuming because of its. Remote location, if you will, from the rest of the state, they're not necessarily gunning about signing up for maintenance and making it part of the actual Utah Trail Network. So they want to leave the door open for. If they make that decision, then they want to be able to put it back into officially make it part of the Utah Trail Network, at which point they would take over maintenance operation. But until that time, they want the local municipalities to take ownership of the right-of-way, ownership and responsibility of all maintenance, all. Uh reconstruction, if there's damage that happens, and 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 just all responsibility. So. About two or three weeks ago, initial conversation started with between us, Providence City and Millville. Maybe even before that, but it got real serious a couple of years ago with the national agreement. Millville's made it very clear since the beginning they're out. They don't want anything. They're just not interested. And so it's uh upon Nibley City and Providence to take on that responsibility if we so choose. So Providence had some freeze. Uh. They had a lot of concern with the agreement. That is why, I don't know if you guys noticed in your email today, I sent you a new document. I was told. That Providence is on, at least uh the Providence City staff is on board with that, and that's the agreement. It's gonna go to their council, I believe, on the sixteenth. And so we can, we can flip to that if you'd like. I I originally had some concerns or some. Hesitations about it. Kind of signing up for maintenance of something that we don't know exactly what it is. There's a lot of details in the engineering design, how things are put together that would impact and influence maintenance. And the cost of what that maintenance would be. And so that's really my biggest hesitation, and I would just like to make sure that we will have the opportunity to be in the room, part of the design. Make sure our city engineer is comfortable with the way the specifications end up, so that we're gonna get a quality product that's not gonna suggest maintenance. More than if it was designed another way. So that was, that was one concern. The other concern is the the portion that is actually, if you look at the lower left corner, that trail starts at around about near Richland High School. They are hoping and believe it's possible to put in an underpass underneath that bridge. Now. That is cool, uh that is exciting. And the point of that would be is for a regional trail to not cross highway. Well. Ninety-nine point nine percent of Nibley City would have to cross the highway to get to this trail. So I would like and prefer that you have both options, potentially extend that trail at least along the highway to twenty-six hundred south, so that you have that option. And or you could go across twenty-six hundred south at the light, down the existing trail that we put in. Eight or nine years ago, and then loop back and go underneath the bridge and then out along highways. Does that make sense?
You're saying because on the west side of the road, there's not a sidewalk from twenty-six hundred south to where the trail would be? That's.
There's nothing there. It's just shoulder problem. And so to get to the trail, you would have to cross. So I know that that's the greatest thing for our residents to have to do, so.
But it's okay to build the trail for Millville. It's okay to maintain it. We will.
Yeah, and that that's a whole separate side of discussion. Now, part of, another hesitation, and I guess let me cut to the end here real fast, just. I think, at least where our staff is, is we 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 would recommend passing for first reading. And letting us kind of get through some of these details that we're talking about. We can continue this discussion, make sure we understand what concerns, questions that you guys have, and be able to take those back to UDOT and see if. We could do anything with this. I'm not a hundred percent sure that there is room at this point. For more negotiation, but at least so we can bring up some some points. So that said, one of the things in this agreement is appendix C talks about the responsibilities between where is the line between Providence and Nibley. And we've had some preliminary discussions with Providence about some different ideas on how to do that. Hit, their preference would be to not include that in this agreement.
UDOT's preference.
Sorry, Providence City's preference would not be, they want the agreement, but I think. The biggest hesitation Providence has with it is they just honestly feel like they're. Being micromanaged a little bit and told what to do and has cons- uh he has concerns. This is, the city manager has concerns about uh being held to. Certain standards that he may not necessarily want to be held to. He wants to take care of the trail, wants to maintain the trail, but he wants to do it the way Providence would like to do it, the way Providence City fits into their budget and maybe not necessarily to a UDOT standard or. Something that UDOT and or maybe a citizen would expect from this agreement. So he's really trying to honestly just kind of. Give that as generic as possible and leave out as many details as possible, and his mind would be a benefit to not being tied to those issues. So again, I don't know. We just got this today. I I have not heard it out of their mouth whether or not they're happy with it, but I do know that they are planning to take it to council, like I said, I believe, sixteen.
So what's. City Manager Ryan Snow's alternative is this, we don't know anything about the maintenance, but between Nibley and Providence. All the jurisdictions involved will. Trail on all those different jurisdictions, Millville, Nibley, the county, and Providence, between Nibley and Providence, he's confident we can work it out.
Okay. I agree, so. I didn't get any. I I think so. I mean, I threw out an idea of potentially maybe we would just remove Snow when the winter time, he would take care of summer maintenance. He thought that was interesting. He hadn't thought very hard about it, and. But he seemed open to options and open to ideas and wasn't real set on exactly. What he was was wanting or hoping to do, but I think again, the point for him is just to get it out of UDOT's. And. And I I I shouldn't probably not speak for him. I mean, that's just my interpretation of what I've seen, what I've heard. From some of the emails and some of the meetings that have that have happened, so. We did have a meeting with. Internally, our staff and looked at what would the cost be to maintain this, and you know, it's, like you said, we don't know a lot of the details, but I mean, off the cuff and off the guess, you're probably looking between five and ten thousand dollars in. Staff time for plowing, mowing, maintaining, then, you know, repairing potholes, whether that's concrete or asphalt.
Except annuals.
Yeah, annuals, sorry, five to ten thousand dollars a year annually in maintenance for this. Then, one of the other problems, and and not just Providence that has had is. With the agreement, it 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 is a little odd that. We want to give this to you, we want you to take care of this, but we decided to want back. And that's in the agreement. They have up to three years to decide how much they want it back.
I mean, most of this trail, I guess, most of this trail fall in Millville.
I think where it makes them ninety-eight hits west there exists the belonging line, so it's about fifty percent in Providence. Forty-five Millville, maybe five Nibley.
Yeah, Millville and Cache County, I think, because the Furman property is an unincorporated county.
Right, so how come Cache County would be responsible?
They told us they didn't have the capacity and the ability to do it. So. That's a great point. I I I usually, do we look at that on the map? Can we go to parcel viewer? We're certain that that's unincorporated.
Yeah, there there's a, there's a section that that's unincorporated.
But you know how the county feels about taking care of a small section. I shouldn't speak for them. People are feeling the same, small size.
Right.
That's.
It's something that gets so hurt that.
The whole thing.
Exactly, it is. In Millville. Yeah.
And counting.
We do actually do that now.
We do.
Where the in Millville, but the existing trail that sits on it. And so, and for this agreement, then we would have dedicated stuff property, sixteen feet, I believe. Sixteen feet wide. I assume they would shove that all the way to the west. One of the questions we all had was, does that mean we have to go and take care of the park strip between the edge of the asphalt sidewalk? I don't believe it does per this agreement. It just basically said we gotta take care of that. That's sixteen feet and, you know, both shoulders and thirty shoulders. I don't know how wide the asphalt would end up being. Personally.
Sixteen feet, eight feet on each side of the center.
So that was the right-of-way width, but it didn't say how wide the actual asphalt trail would be. So my assumption would be. In ten feet. Twelve feet, maybe.
This is unincorporated here. That little section.
Yeah, that's the Furman Bridge to the, you know, there.
So between the Furman Bridge and six hundred south is.
Or between the ri- basically the river and the Furman, the river crossing and the Furman Bridge, yeah. This is, this is Nibley.
The track, that the track follows the river, and the river probably goes under the highways, is that correct?
Correct.
It's through a.
Just a big bridge. Big bridge, uh it'd be pretty similar to the one tenth west. If you've been under that. It's just big concrete curves. And inside you have a little bit elevated. And they put a trail on that. Now, that one. Often closes on high water years.
Yeah.
It seems like lately more years than not, but this year probably obviously we're gonna have a sort of major runoff, so it didn't close this year. I know there's another one at near mouth of the canyon. That one's hasn't been closed either, but we would be in a similar situation, have to evaluate that and determine what it would say to allow people. And there's also a question, again, just go back to the design, what's the clearance? I think they're showing six foot six right now. That's not odd. So I think a kid on a bike, especially my son on a bike, I don't think he's going to believe that thing. No, probably try. So. There's some issues and some things there. There was a lot of liability questions, like was there liability on this? Kind of talked through that thing in the, especially with the, that came to my mind because of the low clearance. But there's a lot of things we have to do for to make sure we're not being negligent. And causing a safety, but there's a lot of signage and things. As long as we're not being negligent, we should be sort of protected from liability. With the way the government immunity works. So tha- that's another maintenance question, you know, how high or out of the floodplain is that thing? If that thing gets washed out, are we rebuilding that often? Or do they build it such that it won't be washed out, but we still gotta go plow six inches of mud off it every year? You know, there's, there's a lot of those questions, I think, that are tied to design that we just, we still really don't right now.
The the tenth west, um. Crossing, it goes under tenth west. I've spent a lot of time there. It turns out we have a, our lap best quality site there. So I was there every day for about three weeks. It's a cool spot, and and they've had about, I saw about ten inches of water on that trail. This year.
This year?
More, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Even this year.
Did they close it?
I don't, I, no, they never closed it. There's a sign there that was never across the trail that I saw. There's a sign, but it's just laying down. And and that's when I told you there's two kinds of kids, the kinds of kids that come to that. And they stop and look at it, and that's the kinds of kids that know momentum is key to get through it. And and it got muddy, right? When the water receded, it was muddy and. Somebody swept it off. But it's a, it's a neat thing. I mean, I I believe it's a, it's a valid way to get underneath tenth west. And I think it's a valid way to get underneath one sixty-five, but. I mean, to me, this is, this is a showstopper. If we, if we, one sixty-five is still a barrier to Nibley. And if we make Nibley residents cross one sixty-five to get on this trail that we maintain. Essentially, in in the, you know, in the middle of Millville. Starts in the middle of Millville. We, we make our residents cross one sixty-five to go down and get on this trail so that they can go underneath one sixty-five. Then that's, that's, it's not acceptable. So, you know, Justin's idea that. The only way this works is if we have both the under one sixty-five crossing with the river and. The continuation of the trail about where, yeah, Levi, Levi's running its cursor to twenty-six hundred, so Nibley residents can go get on this trail. Without having to cross one sixty-five, even with crossing lights and all that other stuff. You know, Mom and Duck with three little kids with Hunter on bicycles, it's still, it's still a challenge to get across back to one sixty-five. So I'm not, I mean, if, I'm not interested in having Nibley City maintain a trail for Millville residents, that Millville won't maintain themselves. And that actually raises a, an issue though, is, and that is, if we're not using the. The river to cross one sixty-five, now we have to get Nibley residents. Across. The river to get on the trail. And so.
Another bridge.
There, well. It's either use the UDOT bridge, you know, the trail has to go up on the UDOT bridge, but it's the vehicle bridge and then down onto the trail. There's about eight feet from when I looked at it on the parcel viewer. And, you know, maybe some good old Jersey barriers.
That'll do it.
Some kind of, who would get it bad in Nibley, right? To make people feel safe and that probably would be safe, but, you know, if we're not using the UDOT bridge. To get across the highway, we have to use the UDOT. If we're not going underneath the UDOT bridge to get across the highway. Then we have to use the UDOT bridge to get across the river. So there's some details there, right? And Tom, you were kind of nodding your head. I don't know if you looked at any of those details or if that's just to to be determined. Just exploring. Just don't know, right?
Yeah, that, I guess that's really my biggest heartache. They want us to sign this before they want to spend. They want us to sign this before they want to spend money on design, so.
Yeah, and. Flat out, the design starts with, well, where is the trail? And if they're already set and there's no. Question about where the trail is going to be and we don't get to have any input on that. Then it doesn't make sense for them to ask us to maintain a trail. That we think will be of limited value for Nibley residents. I mean, I'm happy to maintain the trail myself. I find it's in a dozen areas. Serious money, but I think there's that kind of benefit to Nibley if we can get our citizens on the dark. But if they have to go to Millville to get on it. Crossing sixty-five, this doesn't work.
Just to clarify, there's also, there's not a parking lot in the design at all. So like if somebody was coming from. Further away than just. Biking distance, it has to park in the high school if it's available. Or somewhere on the road.
We're in, we're motionable.
Yeah, there's no trailhead.
Yes, it, I'm sure it's intended to be a trailhead.
Okay.
I mean, it connects ironically to a Nibley trail, which is. Which was at my school.
Yeah. Thinking if there's, you know, a mom of three kids on bikes, she'd be a lot more hesitant to want to cross over one sixty-five to get on this trail. I would be, my kids are already. Yeah, so. Yeah, so the idea of being able to start on the west side of one sixty-five seems much more agreeable. For somebody with small kids.
If they go on. The east side's fine too, but if he starts across the highway.
Yeah.
At some. Or, it's your choice. If we extended that, they don't still have to cross.
If we extend the. Yeah, if we extended the trail, go down to twenty-six hundred.
It's a little better.
Still have to cross the river.
Exactly.
Yeah, on the bridge. Cross the highway, under the bridge, across the river on the bridge.
Yeah, and we, we. Multiple reasons lost. Access via Stokes property, both because the firms are out and. Because of their restrictions.
Yeah, if you put up, uh, this is our, to just pick out a scale.
Yeah, let's do it.
All right. I'll, I'll join you. Um, the packet has the map with the trail on it. Exhibit. Something, something.
Oh, wait, it's over here. Is it not pulling up?
Yeah, that one, yeah. So, I mean. That northern, which is to the right part of the trail is going to be absolutely gorgeous. It goes along the. Blasman Fork River. It's going to be shaded. It's going to have a river. It's going to have interesting things. Um, the south part of it. Not so much. And there's still river there up the south part, but because of. So. Uh, insistence or DWR's insistence that there can't be a trail through Stokes property despite our fifteen years of progress and because of the. Uh, Cache County open space decision to spend some of our twenty million dollars to. Protect Joe Furman's property and not requiring him to. Give us any sort of easement on the property that we as Cache County citizens now own the development rights to. Uh, it's, it's half of it's a great trail. So there's the scab that just got ripped off.
That someone else maintained.
And, yeah, and, and to just to make this point, I'd be, it's like. Well, our section of the trail is easier to maintain. The boring part is trees are going to fall on it and. It's just a suck. It would sure be nice. Yeah, it would be. I just need to lose quickly. Nate, I'll make the motion to approve first reading. We have a motion. And second for, a motion for making second norm to approve for first reading. And then. I think what that means is go off and settle some of these issues, not as counsel, but as a. We have representatives to counsel. I, I, I'm certainly passionate about this, if you don't mind me. Part participating, I would love to, and. Justin and Tom and Dubai. Will work this out for what we think. This is a good deal for Nibley and, you know, two of you. We could do three if you wanted to do a meeting. But if two of you, two of you want to be a part of this too. I, I, yeah. discourage anybody from doing the fun. Yeah, I, you, you definitely have some things to work out, because when I looked at it, I'm like. Is there any, even any part of this in Nibley and we're going to pay? Money to maintain this? That, that part right there, that's on the east side of one sixty-five.
Yeah.
Could be something.
That's Nibley.
We can negotiate that. I, uh, I don't want to build an expectation of successful there. Land has approached me about this a long time ago. You know, it's not a. And, and I shouldn't say things like this. This was in a public meeting, uh, Millville, when they said, well, we're not going to maintain the trail. They said, we have a trail. If you have one, you don't need a couple. Trail network, not trail. Okay, you feel like you have, we have. Direction on this? I think the keys will be. You know, and. And even if it was, actually, if it's not part of the UDOT agreement to Ryan Snow's. Uh, point. Maybe we start with somewhere when, uh, with, uh. Providence, I think we have a fifty-fifty split on the maintenance and we found out later we don't. So it would be up to the us, you know, in Providence to. Say, yeah, we're better at doing this part. You're better at doing that part. But it's not what the original agreement was, so let's, let's just change that. Down the road, not now. We don't know anything yet. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, and we need to make sure UDOT. And everybody else involved understands what first reading needs.
Yes.
Counsel supportive of this and we have some issues to work out before we actually adopt it.
Yeah.
That's counsel's.
Yeah, I don't get the idea. Language that says we're in agreement. We're not fully in agreement till this comes up. Whatever they need to feel like they can move forward. But eventually we need to be able to say, yeah, we're not.
Yeah, and.
Have been opt out after design. Yeah, I thought about that too. I don't know how you put that out.
I mean, except for them to understand that we want to be part of the sign and first reading is not a guarantee of passage on second reading, so get us involved in discussion.
Yeah.
And, and we'll try to come up with something that we think people will like. Okay. Any opposition to voting for first reading? Seeing none of those in favor of advancing to first reading, noting issues to be worked out before second meeting. Uh, please say bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? Thank, thank you. Good thing, good thing.
This has been really easy. Just one more.
Okay, you know, we're so close to the end of this agenda that I think we should just power through. You know that. Let's do it. Uh, next we have resolution twenty-five dash four. This is not more, this is authorization. Uh, to authorize taxable water revenue bars, incorporate this to take out, uh, a loan that people have heard about. But, uh, loaners would like to make sure the council is willing to accept this debt of half of. Nibley's residents. Am I saying that right, Tom?
Yeah, man, if you would give me just a second, I'm going to get Eric. Just, uh, turn me on or on the phone.
Okay. Do we have time to get a little more water?
Yeah. We told him to send him a Zoom link. He stood out calling.
I'm there.
Hey, Eric. You are live. We are on agenda item number eight, where we're going to talk about this resolution to authorize the loan. So I don't know if you want me to give a quick, first of all, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Can, can, uh, counsel, can you hear?
Can hear you. Yeah.
There is a Zoom link if you want to. I did, I did send it to.
Yeah, so, uh, if you, well, I guess we'll try, we'll try to fly through this. If you can't hear the council, we may have to. Figure something out. Okay, so just a really quick introduction of this item. You guys are well aware that the city staff has been trying to get everything lined up to drill a new culinary water well. We've been working on it now for a year or so. We believe we have the location picked. We believe we have the water rights in place. We're ready to begin construction. We received some money from the. Bureau of Reclamation, or excuse me, from the, uh. DWRE Utah Division of Water Resources. That money has been basically secured. The bill, that was the one point two. Seven hundred and sixty thousand. I thought it was a BOR. Okay, okay, my numbers don't make sense. It's, you can tell it's after budget. So it was about a million, a little over a million dollars we have coming in in grants from two different agencies. One of them secured, the other one, we're just putting the final touches on. We should know for certain. We've been awarded, but we just got to jump through all the hoops before we. Get handed the money essentially. So we, to, to fill out the gap, we went to the Division of Drinking Water of the state of Utah and applied for a loan for three and a half million dollars to be able to fund the rest of the project. And so as part of that. Loan application, there's lots of hoops and lots of junk, similar to any other. Grant or, uh, government's funding. There's a bunch of things you got to do specifically in this case with notifying the public and. Things about taking out the loan. So that is where I will hand it off to Mr. Eric Johnson, and he can help you understand what this is and the process going forward.
Great. Well, thank you, Fred. Now, before. To, as a complete new construction. Because the state code says before. You can issue bonds. You have to give notice. Uh, the maximum parameters for the loan, so. Maximum principal amount. The maximum interest rate. The maximum maturity. And, uh. And so what you're doing tonight is calling a public hearing, which July thirty first. And authorizing. The notice that will comply with. All the requirements of state law. You can't. Proceed to authorize the bonds until after that public hearing on July thirty-first. So tonight, you're just. Calling a public hearing and authorizing the notice. The notice is slightly different than the long terms. The long terms are. That, uh. Uh, three million, five hundred thousand dollars. Bearing what is called a hardship grant assessment. In lieu of interest of two point five percent. So it works just like interest, but it adds a special link. Because of where the money comes from. Um. The, uh, the, the term of the loan is twenty years, but in the notice. Uh, because the whole project has not been did out yet. The parameters in the notice are. Three million, eight hundred thousand. And a hardship grant assessment. Being in lieu of. Of two point five, I said, for twenty-five years. With a one percent, maximum one percent discount. So those are the, the terms you hear authorizing in the notice. Uh, then on July thirty-first, you'll have a public hearing and after that public hearing. Even immediately afterward, you can then consider authorizing the loan that's approved. By if he wanted. Questions?
Eric, maybe you could really quick hit the steps. I saw an email from you today about if this gets passed tonight, then we have to send a letter to. Every resident in Nibley City, correct?
Yeah, I would speak to. Set notices. There's one that is required by statute. And then there's one that the regional water asks you to mail out. To all of your users. And so the, the women that we learned were. Uh, excuse me, I think it contains basically the same information. Uh, but, uh, that will get mailed into one pager and that will get mailed to each of your. Uh, water users. And then, uh, the other notice. Has to be posted in three places for these fourteen days before we come here. The first place is on your city website. Second place is on the Utah Public News website. And the third place is on a bulletin board there at Sino. And tomorrow we will, uh. We will send share those two notices and declare. Which one goes where?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting, Eric. Thanks for that information. Hopefully you can hear me. Um. I think we have taken a very. To me, conservative approach with. Water master planning and. Impact fees and. Getting a two point three, two and a half percent loan to two and a half percent. Seems like we've been. Good about being physically conservative. And then I need to make sure that, or we need to make sure that we can somehow. Show our residents that that's how we feel as opposed to us just out here, hey, we're borrowing money without any. You know, with reckless abandon. So I'm not sure that's point for Eric, but that's point for staff. And I don't know if we get tomorrow, you know, get to look at the. Notices. I think we've done the right thing. I want to give that message to people. If possible.
It's a opportunity.
And the last time we borrow money is when we built.
Yeah, we, we borrowed money to build the six forty west well. That's the last time we actually borrowed, but we, we did borrow money for this building. We also borrowed money for the sewer. So those are the, the sewer in this building are the two outstanding loans that we currently have. Now, we've had a lot of discussion about this building and how based on what the interest rate is, we're ready to pull the trigger on paying that off. We're just waiting for that switch to flip. The sewer is zero percent interest, so we don't have a lot of motivation to pay it off. But it's, it's not regular current borrowing. It's some for.
Right.
Infrastructure.
Okay. All right, so. As I understand them, we need, and if, if we move forward with this, we need an adoption of the resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four. Waiting second reading, which would then set up a public hearing. And then we have another adoption of, uh, uh, another item. After the public hearing, you know. Okay.
So it seems like the opportunity for that education would be at that public hearing if anybody cared or showed up. If we try to send educate, I think what you're trying to tell me is to send education with this notification.
Well, you scared me when there was a letter to every Nibley resident.
Yeah.
As the owner, that's the unnerving part for me. I mean, we'll do it.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, could you add a one pager of why we're getting a well?
Can you understand, do you understand that question, Eric? No, the question was. Nobody, not unless they've been paying attention. A lot of the residents have. This is going to blindside them and they're going to say like, what the heck? Why are we borrowing money? We've been through a long process of studies and. Planning and is there, can we add? Material and or education with this notice that goes out? So that a resident has no clue could read it and say, this is why they're taking out the money instead of just this pretty formal notification of, hey, you're going to go in debt.
Yes. If you would like, then it can be added to both notices.
Okay, perfect.
Nice.
Can I just make a recommendation to consider, um, think of a website? Give some kind of some in debt. Okay.
That's a good point. People like Eric, people don't look.
Yeah, maybe that's how you do it. Just have a QR code or a link, maybe. Yeah, I got you.
Super summary.
Great idea.
As opposed to printing home, correct? Cheryl.
One being mailed out for residents. Eric, do you know the, the timeframe for the, the mail notifications?
Uh, because it's not a statutory requirement, but a request of your lender who is also your water regulator. Uh, there isn't a dead, deadline, you know, by a far and events. They usually, you know, what the, you know, the service changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that enough information for, uh, counsel to act on one way or another on resolution twenty five twenty four?
Motion to approve resolution twenty five twenty four and waive second reading.
We have a motion from Norm and a second from Garrett to approve twenty five twenty four and waive the second reading. Uh, and forward with, as Harry described, right? That's, that's implied in your motion. So that's before the gallons. Discussion, please. Any opposition to voting? Okay, since this is on final passage, Cheryl, if you'll call the roll for us. Thank you.
In favor?
Four in favor and none opposed, uh, the resolution passes.
Hey, we're good, Eric. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Bye.
Bye.
Moving right along, twenty five twenty five. Tom, we can't wait to hear about our favorite flowers and all the progress we've made.
It's been slow, but there is progress. Just, I can go speed through this. I can go slow and in detail, but I've got about twelve slides. Goes from the entire history of this park, how we got to where we are. Or we just cut to the chase and just get to a vote on something that we have to do if we're gonna capitalize on the, on the grand money. Any preference? Okay, I'll just go through the whole thing. So in twenty twenty. The short version, yeah. And I'll skip through this history. I wanted to display the original wetland boundary that was base, the basis of the original concept plan on the left. And then the boundary of wetlands on the right is an updated one, once our, our original permit was denied by the, or not denied, but it was requested more information from the Army Corps when submitted our permit application. So it almost doubled in size. With that also came all these other NIBA requirements. Their Army Corps Wetlands, Archaeological, Historical and Endangered Species, and I, I highlighted the wetland and the endangered species. In order to capitalize on the land and water conservation fund grant, we need to satisfy these NIBA requirements. The U R grant is also tied to this land and water conservation because we're counting that money as our match for the U R grant. And so there's two different phases, as you remember, there's the, the phase one of the park and then phase two is the bike park. Both of these are very, very much connected. And the current status of the project is we have a contract with D W A. We've gone through some value engineering, we've ended our we have another opportunity to maintain contact with our grant administrator. We have another opportunity to request another increase, which could cover some of this extra environmental costs that we're incurring. Getting through this NIBA process. And that is the next step, is reapply for our permit with the Army Corps and go through this, this whole entire process. We've maintained communication with the Army Corps, so I, I think it'll be expedited. If we can satisfy the requirements from the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. And that is a protective easement for the U Lays Trusts. It does come with some conditions, and these are all listed here. It's a twenty year term. It includes a habitat management plan that the idea behind the habitat management plan is just to make sure that the vegetation is not manicured, but maintained, that won't compete with the U Lays Trusts. It all, it also addresses things like water source, um, don't dry up any current flows through there, things of that nature. So back to the, the vegetation management, that could be accomplished by mowing before the blooming period. It could be by grazing goats. Oops. Cows, whatever. You, but, but it gives the, the city the choice, but we, we continually monitor this through the twenty year period. And through adaptive management plan, if, if things change, we would adapt our, our application of, of maintenance as well. So we, we continually have to manage and monitor. The first two years, we continue the survey of, of U Lays Trusts. This is a, a very formal survey. They go out with survey rods, like they flag each population as it, as it blooms. And that's coming up pretty quick. The first year is around six thousand, a couple hundred dollars. The next year is also sixty four hundred dollars. Through twenty twenty seven, I have a contract waiting to be signed on my desk. It's in the twelve thousand five hundred dollars to get through this first year. And that's the majority of the maintenance cost, too. But we, Rod and I sat down and we put together a maintenance, maintenance cost throughout the whole twenty year term. It's about eighty three thousand dollars. Twelve thousand or thirteen thousand dollars is that is in the first couple of years. And then through the next eighteen years, it's a yearly, also about thirty five hundred. So it's not exorbitant. It sounds like a lot, but it's not too bad. It allows us development of the park improvements through the, how the, the plant was modified. Construction activities only occur between September fifteenth and July one in each year. So back to the urgency here, our, our land and water fund grant, the term expires October twenty twenty six. So if we don't get started this fall, there's not, there's a chance that we might lose our funding if we, if they don't extend our term. That's also a part of the plan, I guess. It limits access to the developed areas of our, dogs are allowed in the park if they're on a leash. Additional development may be considered and, but requires an environmental site assessment with the U, United States Fire or Fish and Wildlife Service. But we, we can't consider any additional development beyond what's on this original plan for at least three years. Um, there is after the first two years, then we do monitoring of this population every other year, and I can be, I'm, I'm hoping to get a USU professor that has some interest in there, or they can have graduate students come out and study this population throughout the eighteen years. So those are, all this list is pretty much what regulates this, this easement. I think it's reasonable. It's, if, this is a product of negotiations with the Fish and Wildlife involvement with elected officials and staff and environmental scientists with kind of that. Civil Solutions Group, uh, you met Coleman Klein, he came and gave you presentations. Part of the easement also includes reference to this habitat management plan, and it requires a an educational kiosk, some information out there that says, hey, this is a U Lays Trust. This, this population, you can observe it. This is when it blooms, it just gives some information on that. We also need to, because of the funding, we should recognize land and water as, as a funding source for the pro, for the property and, uh, U org as well. So if, if we get approval and waive second reading today, we will finish up the biological assessment. Fish and Wildlife, I just had a conversation with them at five thirty this evening. They're working on the final biological opinion, which brings everything together. Once that's signed, it's contractual. And we move forward. And they will support Army Corps permitting and ex, help expedite that for us. Best guess, we have about ninety days of permitting. We can be under construction in November. Be through this construction period by the July one and have a park by next year. Any questions, comments, concerns or complaints?
So if it is de-listed or in, in two years from now, then what happens to conservation easement?
That's a great question. We tried to get that null, to nullify the easement. Their opinion on that is these con, this, this conservation effort and these easements that are currently in place throughout the nation are why this plant is becoming de-listed. So to just eliminate them would defeat it the whole purpose of all their efforts so far. So they weren't willing to, to negate that or nullify the easement once that happened.
So it will still go over twenty years, but then what happens after twenty years?
Twenty years. It can be renewed, but it has been mutually agreed upon by.
City says. Okay, so this is how, it's longer listed. And the easement's up, and the city says, we want to do something with that land, we have the right then to do it.
That's correct. It, we mutually agree. Any extension?
Mutually agree.
Yes.
Mutually agreed to extend.
The, yeah, right.
Right. Not mutually agreed to.
That is exactly. I was important, that specific language, mutually agreed to extend. Part of the negotiation also was Yeah, so back to that point. Future development will be allowed, but if we try to avoid the population and do an additional B S A site assessment with the Fish and Wildlife, but we can't do that for at least three years. And we directly have these two. So statutory request is that we, that second reading is waived and that you give authorization through this ordinance to record this easement to move forward and get permitted and construct a park.
I'm catching you off guard on this, Tom. The exciting part, I think, to a lot of people about this park will be the bike track. But we got bumped out of the queue for the bike track, folks, and you talked about getting the phase one rolling so we can get this dirt moved. Any idea what this does to the bike park schedule?
So I've been communicating with, we still have a contract with them as well.
Yes.
Uh, fair to ramp company. They've agreed to postpone it, and they're on cue to start that this spring. It is, it's difficult to start in the winter on this, on that portion of it, because it's a specialized asphalt product. And it doesn't do well in cold weather, so they think they can get it done before that July.
Wow, so that's fantastic. You're saying phase one and phase two, which include phase two's the bike park next year, next summer.
Yes, yes. We were, we did apply for phase two B of the bike park
Right.
with U org, and we were denied, and I think primarily our denial was based on, we haven't I think if momentum continues, we have a pretty good opportunity to get that next phase as well. And future phase of some of the other portions of the park. Justin mentioned, and I forgot about this, we did give RAS money for the bike park.
Not as much as we asked for, but we got some. I think it was a hundred and eighty.
Yeah, but it was half of what we wanted. We need, want about three sixty.
Well, Tom, thank you for being so diligent on this. Seems like it's easy to give up a microwave, but you never even showed an inclination to do that, so thank you.
I, I took about a finish this part before I retired. At least phase one.
But I'd rather keep you around and build this park.
There, there's ways to do that.
Okay.
I, I do have a countdown to when I get thirty years, so it's three months, four weeks, or three weeks and six times. I started in, on July seventh nineteen ninety seven.
It's too soon.
There's always one great way to, to keep someone around. Just give them a huge raise. Cause then they need to stay around for three years to get that high three. Just a hint.
All right. We have a motion from, and a second from Garrett to approve resolution twenty five twenty five, waiving second. Discussion from the council. Any opposition? Oh, sorry.
Uh, nine four seven, which is the deed of easement. It says on the very first line, this deed of protective easement made on this, the fifty seventh day of July twenty forty five.
Oh, yeah. That is purely a placeholder.
Okay.
This is a draft.
Confused.
It, it was a draft. So, and I didn't mention this. This was a draft that simultaneously, as I was preparing this for city council, I was also working with Fish and Wildlife to get their input and their take, so I put draft and just put that date, just to be funny. Thanks for catching that.
I will.
Yeah, and, um, I did hear back from them. They're okay with it as it is. There's no modification. Which is crazy to me because I was banned, called people, asking them, do you have time to write? No one knew. I didn't know how to do it, so I.
Yeah. Sounds like we were too easy. Should have been a little more aggressive then, if they said, okay.
No, I just got like a beginner's level.
We have scheduled. Yeah, but that is an important piece of information that came out, and that is US Fish and Wildlife is gonna go with this.
Yes, they've accepted this.
Yeah.
So I just had to finalize this, uh, put a date on there, get a signature, and they, they said they didn't even need to sign it. Because this will be part of that biological opinion that finalizes everything. That's coming soon.
Other questions, discussion, comments, opinions? Is there any opposition to voting? Cheryl, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson, what is your vote?
In favor.
Councilmember Lawerson?
In favor.
Councilmember Mann, in favor. Councilmember Mann.
In favor.
Thank you.
Four in favor and none opposed, resolution passes. Tom, thanks for your good work on this. Definitely appreciate it. Okay, uh, that brings us to the last item, council and staff reports. Who wants to start? Let's start with Nathan, right in yourself. Are you ready or do we go there? Sounds like you're ready. Or not. Okay, Eric.
Uh, I just have one question. I had a, um, a resident reached out to me and said she wants to organize a service project. A service day for the city, and she asked if the city has any things that need to be done that she could put together to do. She said, we have a central place like in the park that we could use, and I can provide the manpower, city had any opportunities. So if he has something that we think about, or you can get back to me, and if parks need something, or I don't know, anybody.
Yeah, so if I could, we, we have a meeting, I believe, next week?
Oh, sorry. So we're, we're gonna, uh, participate, they have service, uh, city in conjunction with, uh, the Church of Jesus. They say, so we will, all sorts of projects together and resources and send out advertisements, so I'd be happy to get
They say, so we will, all sorts of projects together and resources and send out advertising, so I'd be happy to get. Or if they should like to participate.
Okay, great. Awesome. Terrible permission to you.
And, and she wants to do something else, be different? We can, we have a project. Morgan Farm and, yeah, quite a place. Infamous black. These kinds of. They're pretty invasive activities. So we'll go with that first, right? And then if they feel like they can do something using. You can talk to Morgan Farm and. Is Becky, Becky okay about that?
Yeah.
And it's, it's.
We could just invite them to, I mean.
Say. Hey, Karen, anything else?
Thank you, that's great.
Eric, what do you have, of course?
I just had a, um, follow up from last meeting, which is. Any workshop on product works? And we just. We have a list of. All of them.
Yeah, I've seen Rod do a presentation for the. Parks and Recreation Committee. We could probably use a bunch of that. That Rod put together.
I'd just like to see that, hey, for you, that workshops. Yeah, you get your.
Yeah, we included in inventory. And, um, it obviously didn't get on the agenda this time. Sorry about that, but we, we need it on agenda. And make sure we understand the. Type of information you want to talk about. It's presented. Sound good? Norm, what do you have?
Thank you.
Wow. Might get out of here before dark. Maybe. I don't have anything. They go ahead.
I'm good.
I'm good. Quick update on construction projects, thirteen on the west, looking to. So shut down the road for days and also to have somebody have some landscape use to treat some, some other things, so. We should be done by the end of this month. For the last day, Cameron, if I could mention this last. Conference meeting, but they give me a schedule that starts till like twenty eighth. There'll be some closures, we'll, we'll notify the public through our website and stuff. We'll get that one done by October fifteenth. On the thirty two hundred south crossing. Councilmember Man, I have final plans. I'd like to sit down with you, just make sure you're comfortable with where we are. I'll, I'll get together the group that was originally involved and. If, if everyone's comfortable with the design. I hope to use the state contractors list and just award it to Cash Valley Electric. They do these things all over the state. They give, these are all. Pre-bid through the state, so we get a really good deal, and so it, it eliminates the, the need or the, the concern of not going out to competitively bid it. We get a really good price in there, so I'd like to get that and give it on their schedule. Any questions, Tom?
Do they do the civil works as well to organize that? Cash Valley Electric or just the electrical work?
They, they have full licenses. They, they're doing two hundred north right now. No, not them, but very similar would be two hundred north where they're doing all the. Pedestrian ramps and they're doing.
Okay.
The new signal, like tenth west, everything.
August eleventh. Six P M, we'll be at the Sports from Paradise in. There should be like bounce houses for the kids. Marvel, it's being invaded and opportunities to do some fishing out there in check first. Also, the U L A, you can say cities and towns and October first and second, which is Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, we have booked a bunch of hotels just because they go so quickly and we have some, uh, time to. Cancel those if needed, but if you would let me know if you're planning to go to that as soon as possible. Also, if your thoughts. Well, we can get that finished up and registration is made. Um, they haven't put out a early work typing, but. They typically do, so the earlier people start, we can say, look, we'll go look at your calendar. Appreciate it.
And the dates is, we stopped over person, so.
Hey, anything else to come for the council? If there's no objection to adjourning. We are adjourned.